Call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of May 20th. We'll note that Commissioner Oltman is absent. All other commissioners are here. The first item is the Order of Business. Are there any changes to the Order of Business? Hearing none, would there be a motion to approve the Order of Business?
I make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
The motion and the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. The motion carries. Next item is the Consent Agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Now, would there be a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move we approve the consent agenda.
Sir, a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. There are no timetable agenda items tonight, so we will just proceed right to the non timetable agenda. And the first item we have there is a Water/Wastewater Reserve Funds Resolution. Mr. Coling, anything you'd like to say in way of introduction?
Mr. President Commissioners, this is a very brief resolution to take care of a pending accounting matter. You may be aware the city has kept on its accounting books a reserve fund for both water and wastewater replacements. And those funds have been on the city's books for some time now and have been unexpended. We looked into it and there does not appear to be any obligation for us to have those reserve funds. And those can be returned to the city's main wastewater and water general fund in order to better account for those monies. This resolution would provide the accounting department authority to make that change, and city staff would recommend approval.
And it's resolution number what, Mr. Coling?
This would be resolution 20-2013.
Well, I would certainly speak in favor of this resolution. I think those funds were set aside many years ago in anticipation of, you know, something extraordinary happening to the community. And when you have the oil impact that we have, I certainly think that that qualifies for extraordinary. We have multiple uses for these funds, and I certainly would recommend that we approve the resolution. Any other comment or discussion?
I make a motion to approve resolution 20-2013.
We have the motion and the second. Any other comments? Hearing none, then we'll vote. Mrs. Stookard.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. That brings us to the financial report. Mrs. Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. President Commissioners. I would like to highlight a few items from the financial report through April. First, I'd like to note that per your approval of the previous resolution, the main replacement reserves for the Water/Wastewater Fund will be eliminated, and the balances moved to their cash account. The balance at the end of April was $2.5 million, and this will now be $3.6 million with that The general fund report, with 33 percent of the year completed, our property taxes equal $3.3 million, and were 96 percent collected compared to budget. Our other taxes and fees, which include financial institution tax and franchise fees, totals $174,000 and is 71 percent collected compared to budget. Our intergovernmentals, which include revenues we receive from state and local governments, such as the highway distribution tax and the oil production tax, totals $881,000 and is 21 percent collected compared to budget. Our licenses fees and services, which include building permit revenues and oil royalties, is 28 percent collected compared to budget. Our building permit revenue is up $58,000 compared to last year. This category also includes our municipal court fines, which are running equal to last year. Our total general fund revenues equal $5.5 million through April, and were 41 percent collected compared to budget. Our general fund expenses are broken down into groups. The first is general government, which includes administration, court, finance, and buildings and grounds, and is 34 percent expended compared to budget. The overage here is due mostly to timing. Our public safety, which includes police and fire, is 26 percent expended compared to budget. Our engineering and streets, which now includes community development, is 38 percent expended compared to budget. This overage is due to budgeted equipment purchases in our street department. Our cultural services, which includes museum and forestry, is 22 percent expended compared to budget. And our total general fund expenses equal $3.7 million through April, and were 27 percent expended compared to budget. In our enterprise funds, our water/wastewater revenues equal $2.5 million through April, and were 34 percent collected compared to budget. And our expenses and capital outlays total $2.9 million, which is 40 percent expended compared to budget. Our solid waste fund revenue is $1.3 million through April, which is 34 percent collected compared to budget. And our expenses and capital outlays total $755,000, which is 20 percent expended compared to budget. In our sales tax reports, in our 1 percent sales tax fund, we received $704,000 of revenue in April, which is up 3 percent for the year. Our 1 percent sales tax fund is broken down into groups. The first is our 50 percent share, which is for street projects and infrastructure. In 2013, we are budgeting infrastructure projects totaling $850,000. The second is our 20 percent share, which is for job creation and senior programs. This segment funds Stark Development, elder care, and the R S V P subsidies, along with the senior citizen and Southwest Regional Grant Programs. Our expenses through April total $334,000. And our third segment is the 30 percent share, which is set aside for capital improvements. The items that are budgeted here include a portion of the final BAC pledge payment, the animal shelter, trails construction, and park and rec improvements. In our half percent sales tax, we received $352,000 of revenue in April, which is also up 3 percent for the year. We are budgeting $4 million towards the public works building construction in 2013. In our hospitality tax, we received $71,000 of revenue in April, which is down 11 percent over last year. Our expenses include $50,000 subsidy for the Stark County Veterans Memorial, and $37,000 for the environmental assessment at the airport to upgrade the jet service. Our occupancy tax breakdown shows the revenues total $33,000 in April, which is down 32 percent over last year. Our expenses include $108,000 paid to the C V V for their subsidy, and $60,000 for the special events grant. In our street projects report, we received $39,000 in revenue, and we've expended $210,000 towards street projects through April. And in our development impact fee program, this program, this slide shows that the program has a balance of $74,000 at the end of April. Those are some of the highlights. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Johnson? On the last slide on the impact fee, you know, I know we have to go through the process where we special assess those. How are we doing on that process?
I believe, I know they're in a time constraint right now to get that project finished, and I do believe they're trying to make sure all projects that are out there will be special assessed in this year.
This year, okay. Are there any other questions or comments? Is there anything in the numbers, as you reviewed them, that gives you any concern once, now that we're four months into the year?
Everything right now is coming in close to budget, other than our sales tax figures. Our 1 percent and half percent sales tax figures are coming back, but our hospitality and occupancy are not.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Would there be a motion to accept the financial report?
I'll move we accept it.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson, Mr. Steiner, Mrs. Stookard.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next is our human resource report.
Good evening, Mr. President Commissioners. The first item under the human resources section is the fire inspector job description. We have this job description rewritten and updated July 30th of 2012. However, we did not have points assigned to our job grades at that time and job classes. And as we're reviewing all of those that were done last year, we came to realize that this job description should be moved up a class because of the points. And I included a copy of our pay scale just to show you how that would happen. This job description was in a class three, grade five. And because of the points, it scored out at 750 points. It will now be in a class four, and we chose to put it in a grade six on the pay scale, which would make it a reclass, so we need your approval on that.
How long had it been in the previous classification?
I'm guessing, I don't know. Can you help me with that, Sean? It's been there since I've been here.
I would agree that it's been there since I've been employed with the city as well, for several years. I couldn't give you an exact date of when it entered that. Maybe Fire Chief Seavock could help, but...
Has something changed in this job over the years that caused it to score more points?
You know, we didn't have scores before, so I don't know that anything really changed with the job description. I think it was a matter of, at the time, wondering where it should have been placed on the scale, and we feel that it was obviously placed in the wrong class.
President Johnson, Commissioners, that's accurate. The job description has not changed. It's, the only changes made to it in 2012 was to fit the new format that the compensable factors would be applied to. Otherwise, since the new grade, the new class and grade system came into being, it had been placed where you see it today, because it was placed, I would say conservatively so, because we did not have the points assigned. It's very similar to other job descriptions that have come before you, where you've dealt with this same issue, that the points are now being assigned, and in doing that, we see in some cases that the position may be, may be wrong. That's, the job description, as it existed in 2012, is how you see it today, other than the points have been put to it now.
I guess my concern with, you know, the system is, when it comes to scoring, it is a subjective scoring method. And my concern would be that there's a bias to the upside. I know at a meeting, either the previous meeting to this or two meetings ago, you had one go down, but I think for every one that's gone down, you've had three or four here that have gone up, so we're having bracket creep. And that does concern me.
Ms. Nomenek, how many other job descriptions have yet to be scored?
I don't have an actual number for that. I would say maybe a fourth of our job descriptions yet to go.
Okay. When we started this process, we knew there'd be a series of adjustment, and you have certainly seen more adjustments to the upside than you have the downside. My guess is that we're probably going to have two or three additional ones that we'll bring before you. I can't tell you which way they're going to go, but our process is pretty well known, and I think fairly well applied now. So I'm not sure if you call it bracket creep, or if you call it a fair adjustment. We are trying to be as consistent in the application as possible.
Mr. President, Ms. Nomenek, I assume that you're reviewing other positions as well?
Yes.
So are you seeing a number that are staying at their present classification?
Most of them are.
Can you quantify that for us? You know, in other words, around the time that you did, that you looked at this particular position, how many others would have been reviewed?
You know, it's hard for me to say how many. I don't have an actual spreadsheet done on it. If you look in this particular job class, we did all the chief operator positions, the building inspector, actually, the building inspector, we kind of look at that as pretty close to the fire inspector. Those two positions scored out at about the same. So prior to this, the building inspector was in a higher class than the fire inspector, which kind of tells us that that was probably reclassified incorrectly. The, that's about all I have done, is the chief operators in that class, senior operators in the one before it. Those all stayed in the same. That's the majority of class, grade four. Most of those stayed in the same position. The property appraiser, the clerk of court, those are all done. I would say probably half, more than half of the job descriptions have stayed in the class that they're at.
Okay, and it appears that this change is probably going to be about $10,000 by the time it's all said and done. Is that correct?
Actually, the person that's in this job, we'll go to the next, I don't know, did we even figure out where?
It means a 13 cent an hour raise for one of the fire inspectors and a 24 cent an hour raise for the other one.
Okay, well, I'm not understanding something. We said we went from a 3.5 to a 4.6?
Right.
Okay. Basically, from 47.359 to 48.955 is up there. Is that the rate we're talking about? Oh, excuse me. From 44.7 to 59.6? Okay, well, the main thing, I was just trying to get a handle on, you know, how many others are being reviewed and how this particular one fits with that number, and I think you've answered that question.
Let me ask that again. Was that a grade three?
Class three, a grade five.
Class three.
You can see, on the pay scale, I crossed out the word "fire inspector" to show you where it was, and then it jumped down one, and it should be highlighted in yellow, to a class four, grade six. So one individual in this position went from 21.67 an hour to 21.80, and the other person went from 23.40 to 23.58 an hour.
They're actually here. They're here and here, I believe.
Okay, I'm sorry. The first, one of them was not at a step one. They went from 23.40 to 23.58, and the other person went from 25.14 to 25.37.
Tell us again what the 7.50 exceeded, the break by how much? I mean, what was, how many points did it take, minimum points did it take to get to this next grade?
This class has, the point range is 725 to 899, and this position scored 7.50. And I believe the building inspector scored the same points, so those two were comparing pretty comparatively.
Are there other questions or comments? They're asking then for a motion to either approve the reclassification or to deny it?
I'll move we approve.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Yeah, any discussion, further discussion?
I guess when I first looked at this, I saw the, it appears that the fire inspector position before was in the class four. That's how I came up with the $10,000, but it was a five, huh? Is that right?
That's right.
Okay.
Other comments? Hearing none, then we'll vote on the motion. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
And then I just have the bill, the hiring journal in the packets for you. We just recently hired one police officer. We still have three positions open at this time. Water utility operator, we were not able to interview anyone. We tried again, reopened it. We had one interview and did not hire, so we'll reopen the position again. Street maintenance operator, we did hire one individual and got another resignation, so we opened that position again. Patrol sergeant, we just had an internal hire there. Nick Gates was offered the patrol sergeant position that Dan Brown vacated. Code enforcement officer, we did just finally get a hire there, and he'll start in a week. The deputy clerk of court position was, we just got a hire on that. She'll start next week. The seasonal positions are starting to fill up. We have three remaining in the street department, and I believe the police department will be doing interviews for their animal control. Buildings and sites is full. Water is full, museum is full, and forestry is full, so we have a code enforcement left to fill in the animal control besides the streets. So we're getting those filled up. Communication specialist, human resource assistant, assistant city engineer, and then, as I said, street maintenance operator are all open positions. They have not closed yet, so that's all I have.
Okay, any comments or questions? Thank you, Ms. Nomenek.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to item D. This is a consideration to approve Dickinson Museum Strategic Plan to Wolf Consulting. Mr. Kessel, are you introducing this?
Thank you, President Johnson. Commission, museum coordinator Ingram wasn't able to be here tonight, so I'll be introducing this item before you. In a response to a request for proposal, or RFP process for planning services that the Dickinson Museum Center has gone through, that resulted in four proposals. They have been reviewed by not only the staff, but also the Yocum Museum Board, and they went through that process. At the end of the day, they have recommended that Wolf Consulting, along with Quintilla Schmidt Consulting, be hired to conduct the planning services. Both Art Wolf and Mimi Quintilla have worked for museums of similar size and are best equipped to facilitate the strategic planning process. This is a budgeted item. We budgeted $20,000 for this process. They wrote a grant earlier and received $10,000 to supplement, and making the project total of a $30,000 project. The hospitality tax was the source of revenue for this project, and they hope to be done by September of 2013. The goal is to not only include the Yocum Museum, but also the Stark County Historical Society and the Dickinson Dinosaur Museum. So it's an effort to involve, and of course, all of the heritages that have an interest in the buildings that are located in, on the site as well. So it's meant to be a comprehensive process to determine what the best uses of that land and those services are and should be in the future. So with that, I'd recommend approval of the RFP to Quintilla, or excuse me, to Wolf Consulting in association with Quintilla Schmidt Consulting.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. You heard the introduction and the recommendations. Are there comments or questions? Go ahead, Mr. Steiner.
I was just going to move to approve the contract with Wolf Consulting.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Are there any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. It brings us to the city administrators' reports.
Thank you. I just have a couple things I want to update you on as a commission. First of all, based on the last city commission meeting, you tasked us with trying to determine the best ways to move forward with fishery side and a couple of streets to make sure they're paved. Been working in conjunction with K L J and Craig Kubas, who is the engineer of record on that project, and also Engineer Watson and Attorney Coling. We met, identified about six different options that the city has to make sure that that can proceed, the hard surfacing of that road can proceed. What I would suggest is that we, the weather has allowed us a little bit more time, it appears, and I just spoke with Mr. Kubas again today, and we think we're very, very close to getting this project done. The majority of the property owners are local and want to also hard surface this road. There are a couple that are from the Fargo area, which he was not able to contact as of our conversation this afternoon. So I think everybody's on the same page. I do think that the paving will get done, and it'll probably get done within the existing special assessment district and the impact fees that we've provided to it, or at least that's the direction we're on today. So I'll certainly provide another update at our next city commission meeting, but know that it is being addressed, and we have taken on significant time to make sure that it, hard surfacing of the roads does happen. I also wanted to let you know that Interstate 56 Exchange, the new one on the west side of town, will now be bid on June 28th. This is a North Dakota DOT project. We are excited about that interstate exchange being created, and they, but they did have to move the timeframe back just slightly. So they still anticipate construction beginning this year, but completion won't be done until next year. And then related to the exit 59, it's actually 30th north of there. They're working on that project. That's the reliever route. They are, have separated that project into two phases. The first phase is approximately 600 yards past 21st Street intersection, and they will also bid that project out around that same timeframe of June 28th and begin construction this year. The second phase is likely to bid at a later date and completed at a later date. And then the grade separation at State's, that looks like it'll be bid in November, with construction starting then the following construction season. So they were very, very aggressive in their timelines. I commend them for trying to reach them as well as they have, but there has been certain things that have slowed them down just a little bit, so...
Mr. Kessel?
Yes.
Grade separation in November or exit 56?
I believe it's grade separation in November. I thought it was in exit 56 on June 28th. I could be mistaken, but that's, let me find my notes.
I understood 56 to be pushed back to November, grade separation sometime next year.
Well, let me clarify that and bring it to the next commission meeting. Either way, they've been put, pushed back... Either way, they've been put, pushed back a little bit from their original dates, and I'll clarify and get those, bring those dates back to you.
Have they determined on the grade separation if it's an overpass or an underpass at this point? Mr. Watson, do you know?
Mr. President, Commissioner, I believe the latest information that I've received in looking in the minutes of the meetings, it appears that it's gonna be an overpass.
Oh.
Which really quite surprises me. But again, that's just what I've seen by reading through some of the minutes. I haven't actually heard anyone say that.
So maybe to be on the safe side, we should just qualify and say, we don't really know yet if it's an overpass or an underpass, if it's bid in June or bid in November. But it was a very good report. They're working on it. These are all good projects, and whether it's Exit 56 or the grade separation or 30th Avenue, that is avenue, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
That would be avenue.
That's, these are all good things, so. And I know the commission wants to know, and I'm sure that, and I get asked by the public frequently, when these things are likely to happen, so, you know, I would encourage you at next meeting to, if you can really say with a high degree of confidence what the schedule is.
That would conclude my report, then, as holy as it was.
Yeah. You have on here impact fee ordinance, too.
Attorney Coling.
Mr. Coling's gonna, okay.
Mr. President, Commissioners, I just wanted to update you on some changes that we're considering and planning to bring before you, for your consideration, changes to the impact fee program. As you know and saw in Ms. Johnson's report, the allocation that has been made for our existing development impact fee program is pretty much all expended or all committed at this point. I believe there's some $70,000 left. And that program has been fairly successful for the city. That's the way that much of our infill infrastructure has been built out with local streets and distribution lines for water and sewer. As we're looking into the future, some of the developments that are being proposed are on the, sort of the perimeter of the city and require some more extensive public infrastructure to be built in order to service those areas. We're talking about water towers and sewer trunk lines and water trunk lines, lift stations, and those may not be contained within the developments as they're coming before the Planning and Zoning Commission and as they're being constructed out. So what we're looking at is a way to make sort of off-site impact assessments against new developments that are coming in. Water towers that may service a large area than just a particular plat that comes into, into the city. So we are looking at making some changes to our impact fee ordinance in order to allow for that and to administer that with something that's referred to as water access charges and sewer access charges, whack and sack charges. There are other communities that have employed this mechanism in order to fund these sorts of off-site impacts, and we are modeling our proposed ordinance after those sort of vehicles in order to, to assess those costs. It would be administered a little bit differently than the existing impact fee ordinance. It wouldn't be something that we would special assess over a period of 10 years or five years for commercial industrial developments, but rather would be a fee that developers, developing areas would pay at the time that they connect to the system and begin receiving the benefits of being connected to the infrastructure that the city builds. So we have a draft of that ordinance prepared. Wasn't prepared in time to put it into the packets for you, but we do anticipate having something before you for your consideration at the next city commission meeting, and we'd invite any input that you would want to give city staff at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Any reaction for, for Mr. Coling and the management team here?
Just have a question. Would they, how long would they be able to carry that, then? Or how long would we carry it as a city? Like now, it's seven years. Would it be the same?
Commissioner DuKart, Mr. President, Commissioners, you know, the exact parameters of that are going to be up to the commission and what you feel comfortable with. The way that these fees have been administered in other cities around the state is that the fee is paid at the time of connection, so that there is not a carrying charge that's, or an interest or a special assessment or anything like that, but it's simply a fee that's paid to connect to the system.
And would it come from the consumer or from the developer?
That would be a matter between the consumer and the developer to decide.
The developer would be responsible to pay the fee to us.
Well, it would be the party that connects to the system.
Okay.
Sometimes we see developers who sell off lots in the midst of their development or as their properties are developing, and if they sell off a lot and somebody constructs, constructs a building there and wants to connect to the system, then we would have a fee set up so that, that party connecting would be the party that would pay the fee.
It's likely, I presume, that the issue would be addressed during a development agreement, though, probably at that phase of a development.
That's correct. We'll need the authorizing authority to do it in our ordinances, but the extent of the charges for whatever water towers or trunk lines are needed would more than likely be spelled out in a development agreement.
Well, we've talked about this, I think, for a long time, and I think it's really good that we're going to implement now. Anxious to see what we do. I know there'll be some devil in the detail, I'm sure, but we just have to do this with the rapid growth we're having.
So it's gonna be called whack and sack?
That's what it's called in other areas of the state and the country.
Well, I think, too, that we need to be quite constringent on, or quite stringent on how, you word that when they do develop, too, so that it's not out there for 20 years. Kind of like now, if you don't, when we rezone something and if you don't build the apartments or whatever, we're gonna revert back to what it was. Kind of that same formula.
We are certainly open to suggestion on calling it something different.
No, that's fine. Whack and sack is a good deal.
Well, we'll look forward to seeing the draft ordinance. I think Mr. Jackson said it well. I think it's something that will be welcomed by the commission.
President Johnson, I do have one more thing, if you don't mind, before we move on from administrative reports. I want to introduce the commission and the public to Jody Ferris. Jody Ferris is a recent DSU graduate and a member of the TR program while she attended DSU. She's gonna be going to the University of Minnesota and the Humphrey School to get her master's degree in public policy. She is an intern for us in the meantime, and we're lucky to have her. She's been working on and putting some of our information on the capital improvements program, and she'll be working with myself and Attorney Coling for the time that she has with us. So she's in the audience. If you'd like to ask her a few questions and put her in the hot seat, I think she'd appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I'm really excited to have this opportunity with the city to get some hands-on experience with policy before I head to grad school.
And where are you from?
Northway, Saskatchewan.
Okay. Where, that's not part of the U.S., is it?
No. Seven and a half hours north.
Seven and a, wow. Did you go to all four years here at DSU?
Yes.
Well, we're glad you did. Welcome.
She's also a member of the volleyball team, or was while she was going, and I haven't heard her say "a" once yet, so.
Just wait.
Welcome. Good luck. Anything else, Mr. Kessel?
No, thank you very much.
Any comments for Mr. Kessel or questions? Okay, well, we'll go to engineering then. Mr. Watson, would you like to take us through each of these items?
Mr. President, Commissioner, I would be glad to take you through at least part of them. The 12th Street project, as you know, is a complete rejuvenation of 12th Street, beginning at Highway 22, proceeding west approximately three or four blocks to 13th Street. The project was designed by KLJ at the, at the city's expense and reviewed by DOT, since it's an urban project, and the bids were received, and a low bid was selected by the DOT, and it's the DOT's recommendation to, for us to accept the low bid, and I'm here tonight to request the commission concurrence that we award this project to the low bidder, JM Marsh shoots of Missouri, for a total of $1.7 million, which was $80,000 under the engineer's estimate. The DOT's portion is 80% of that, although it's capped at $800,000. So the city's share is approximately $900,000, plus any change orders that come due on the project. So the engineering department recommends the commission approval of the low bidder, JM Marsh shoots of Missouri.
How does the North Dakota DOT determine their cap amount?
I'm not really sure. I think that's probably determined by, by, I shouldn't say. I'm not sure.
President Johnson, the urban roads funds are a combination of federal dollars that are passed through the DOT. This year, there's, they're kind of in flux and changing. We actually had several conversations with the most populous 10 cities in North Dakota regarding urban roads funding and how to make sure that they continue in a way that allows us to do projects. The initial distribution of dollars would have actually brought us to zero, and through some negotiations with the DOT, we were able to at least have some dollars moving forward. But it's mostly based upon federal funding.
On our 2013 budget, if Mrs. Johnson and I read this right, it looks to us like we're carrying for our portion $360,000 for this project. That's what we anticipated spending, and so we're gonna be $540,000 above that, plus change orders, and I, it sounds like from what I read, there's at least one change order going to come here. So in round, if we round that up, you know, we have a $600,000 negative variance.
I would agree, and I think the funding stream that I would propose we use for that would be the sales tax dedicated to street improvements. We have two other major projects in there, and we're working those, the size of those projects, as Engineer Watson can attest, to accommodate this project so that we still don't go over the balance.
Mr. Jackson?
You know, I know, either for you, Mr. Kessel, or Mr. Watson, I know that this project was originally going to be bid at the same time as 10th Avenue West. Was that $800,000 cap set for both of those streets? And what are we thinking about for 10th Avenue West right now? Does that have its own cap? Has DOT been treating it separately?
That, Commissioner Jackson, unless, Mr. Engineer Watson has different information, I believe that's exactly the case. There are two different projects with two different caps. That's my understanding. Engineer Watson, unless you have different information?
Mr. President, Commissioners, actually, the cap on 10th Avenue West will be about $1.2 million, and the total estimate for construction on 10th Avenue is about twice that. So it looks like we're gonna be paying, again, about half of the construction cost on that project as well.
And I know that's not unusual for these urban roads projects. I don't know if we've anticipated correctly. That I don't know, but is that, we're getting off the subject maybe here, but is that 10th Avenue West been rescheduled with a letting date?
It has, because we are having some right-of-way issues, and we're not quite ready to go to bid, so we did have pushed the 10th Avenue project. Since, since we won't be going to construction anyway this season, we have pushed the bid date for that project back to November.
Mr. Kessel, I, in a conversation with Mrs. Johnson prior to the meeting, I said that I would like to hold a meeting with you and her and Mr. Watson and go through every street project that we kinda have in our docket for 2013 and 14, and get our updated costs on these and see just where we're at. I, I have a feeling that's, you know, it's significantly more money than what we're carrying in our budget right now, so I'd like to do that. And I'd also like to hold a similar meeting with Mr. Zaroff, so we, we have a good listing, and I know this is part of the project that your intern's working on, too. But I think we wanna, I'd like to know, and I think our commission, too, would, you know, just what total bill we're looking at on these projects. We know what we're receiving from the legislature now, and we're in discussions with our potential lenders, and, you know, our, we're going to have more capital projects than we have funds available, and so, and these are needed capital projects. We, we need to get to a number in terms of what we anticipate borrowing in 2013 and in 2014, so.
If I may, President Johnson, we've got a meeting set up for Thursday at 9 o'clock to do exactly what you've, you've asked, and please attend. If you didn't get that invitation, it was meant to go to you.
Not on my calendar.
If that's available for you, that's, that's the, exactly the type of meeting that we're gonna hold on Thursday, the 23rd at 9:00 a.m., is to walk through all the road, water, and sewer projects. Excellent. Sorry you didn't get the invitation sooner.
Slow email. Okay, well, I suspect we're committed to go on this project whether the North Dakota DOT is capped or not, so, and we have a bid that's within the expected cost.
As I mentioned, Mr. President, Commissioner, as I mentioned, the actual low bid is $80,000 below the engineer's estimate.
So, is there a motion regarding this item?
I'll make a motion to approve the JM shoots construction company.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other, any discussion? Hearing done, then we'll vote. Mrs. DuKart?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Is item B, yours, Mr. Watson? Or would this be Mr. Coling's?
I believe that I'll defer to the city attorney.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. The resolution before you is a resolution initiating the process for vacating the utility easement. This is an easement, 20-foot utility easement on Lot A of South Park, First Edition. The property is located just south of 8th Street Southwest. The, we've had some changes to our subdivision ordinance, and because of that, the process is a little more elongated than what you may be familiar with. This resolution would allow us to publish the vacation of the utility easement, and then the public hearing on this would be held at a later time pursuant to the requirements of state law. But this resolution would allow for the vacation of that utility easement. City staff recommend approval for your record keeping. This will be Resolution 21-2013.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. You've, you've heard his introduction, explanation. Any comments or questions?
How move we approve the resolution for the easement vacation?
Second.
With the motion and the second, is there any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. DuKart?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay, the engineering agreement with, is this pronounced Rainey? Okay, with Rainey Engineering? And who's introducing this item? Mr. Watson? Okay.
No, it'll be the city attorney.
Oh, Mr. Colleen, okay.
Mr. Watson and I are pointing at each other.
I see that.
Mr. President, Commissioners, this is an agreement for engineering services engaging Rainey Engineering. This agreement would allow Rainey to complete work on plating for the new Public Works Building. They would also assist the city with getting that property annexed into city limits. The scope of work is included as an attachment to the exhibit along with the compensation that is due to the engineer for this work. It is a lump sum contract for completion of all of the work. We will get billings that are submitted by Rainey and pay them according to their time put into the project, but there's a not-to-exceed number within the agreement itself. Mr. Watson and I went back and forth on this agreement and I think came to something that we believe we can use as sort of a form agreement for these types of engineering projects in the future, so we're hopeful that as more engineering projects begin to roll out, that we will be able to bring these sorts of agreements to you on a more expedited basis in order to get our engineers engaged and under contract to perform work for the city. City staff will recommend approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Colleen. Are there comments or questions here?
I thought we started this project already.
There, yes, the notice proceed is issued and this is the commission's opportunity to approve the contract for that.
But the Public Works site is outside the city limits.
I'm sorry, yes, the, the, the building is under construction. They're, they're doing that. This is just for the plating of the, the property and annexing.
So, we can annex our own property into the city limits. Who is Rainey Engineering?
Mr. President, Commissioners, the engineering firm is out in Minneapolis. I understand they do have some local people in the area now and I'm not sure, I don't believe they're in the audience tonight, but, but they do have some local engineers that are working on other projects in the city as well.
I didn't, I don't recognize the name. You, Mr. Jackson?
I've met the owner. I don't really know much about them.
They are a new firm to town. I think one of the dozen or so that are in our community. I've also met the owner and their primary engineer here in Dickinson. They do a lot of work in Minnesota. It happens to be a female-owned company, so they get that benefit. But they've solicited our work for several months now and this is the first time that we'll be using their services.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Mr. Steiner.
Just for clarification, the memo states the wastewater reclamation facility. You're saying the Public Works?
It is the Public Works facility.
Public Works, okay. $40 million difference.
For sure.
Any other comments or questions? Well, you've heard the introduction and the recommendation. Is there a motion regarding this item?
I'll move we approve the agreement.
Do we have, we have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. I'll let you continue, Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioner. I do have a short update on some of the projects that are occurring around the city. The Villard Construction Project is running a couple of weeks late. The milling and paving on the east side, that would be east of Highway 22, will be occurring over the next couple of weeks and then followed by the, the paving operations on the west side. The total paving operation should be completed by June 15th, which falls a couple of weeks short, or a couple of weeks longer than the original completion date. And then a couple of extra months will be required to put concrete collars around the manholes and water valves in the street. That was not included in the original plan set and that is a change order that's, that was added. The boring under Villard on 1st Avenue West is to occur this week sometime. The Empire Road alignment, we have had some success with discussions with St. Joseph and it appears that they are receptive to lining up Empire Road with the access from the Sanford Clinic and I do remember, Mr., the President, that you had asked for a display be approved, be shown at this meeting tonight and I have, I kind of want to wait to show that until we have a better definitive alignment of the, of the roadway and hopefully I can bring that to you next time.
Okay, that sounds good.
The West Water Tank and the 18-inch main in the West Ridge in the Pine Crest area, I did have discussions with Meyer Group last week and they are receptive to providing the city with a two-acre lot to put the new water tank on and we are moving forward to including that in the development agreement. So, we will start working closer with the Myers Group to set the alignment of their water lines and sewer lines and so forth within their development and that should occur with, over the next several weeks. The railroad grade separation, I'm, I'm not sure when that's going to go to bid, but as far as I know, we're still working on the typical section that's going to be, be provided either over or under the railroad and there's some discussion that's being kicked around between the DOT and the city and the designers, so I should have a better update on that within the next couple of meetings. The reliever route, I wasn't aware that that has been divided into two lettings, but as city administrator, Mr. Kessel indicated, we'll be lucky to get the first urban section in during this construction season and we are trying to negotiate with DOT folks to include some other amenities that weren't included in the original design, including some, some lighting for the combined path and some other planned landscaping, irrigation, sleeves between the medians and so forth that, that shouldn't cost much. We're, Mr. Kessel and I have been talking with the DOT about who's going to actually pay for that, so, and whether we can get it in the plans or not, so that's an ongoing issue. The stormwater drainage plan study was completed and evaluated and you just approved, the commission approved tonight on the consent agenda for the city to move forward with negotiations with HDR to complete that study and, and complete the, the stormwater drainage plan for the city. That study's been capped at $200,000. The city will be expending on that and I anticipate us beginning negotiations with HDR almost immediately to get that started. 12th Street Project, I updated you before. The 10th Avenue West Project, I kind of brought that to you earlier tonight. The PSNE review has occurred and this, the, it's been pushed back to the November, November bid schedule and the Highway 2 landscaping project, I think the commission's very interested in pushing forward with that project and the city has selected a ULTEG group, landscaping architect group out of Bismarck to complete that project and we will begin negotiating with them almost immediately as well. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Are there comments or questions for the city engineer?
President Johnson, I can confirm when the biddings will happen. I just was in contact with Mr. Salway from the DOT and he has confirmed that the temporary bypass will be bid on June 28th and it will be the five-lane urban section portion of the temporary bypass and that the new intersection, or the new interchange at 56 will be bid in November. Made no comment on the grade separation.
Okay, so Phase 1 of 30th Avenue, which is also known as the reliever route, would bid in June of this year and Exit 56 would bid in November this year.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Now, there's, there's a lot going on with our infrastructure, so. Anything else relating to engineering? Okay, I know on community development, our community development officer called in sick, so we have all these rezoning petitions. I know you're sitting over there, Gary. Are you taking us through these or?
Absolutely not.
Between Mr.?
Well said.
Yeah, that's pretty definitive though.
He's still in his probationary period, the president.
No, I'm, I'm fine with that. I like, I like a straight answer, Mr. Kessel. So, are you taking us through these or Mr. Colleen is? Okay. Well, Mr. Colleen, we'll let you handle these next four items.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. The first ordinance is for second reading of ordinance 1507. This is a rezoning from rural residential to low-density residential. The property is known as Brown First Subdivision. It's located approximately within the boundaries of the Diamond Acres subdivision, just south of the Diamond Acres subdivision. All of the property around this proposed rezoning is zoned R1, so this, our, our district was a sort of a remnant district that they are now bringing into conformance with the properties that are surrounding that. Planning and zoning did hear this course and recommended approval. There are no changes from first reading. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Colleen. If there's anyone in the public that would like to comment on ordinance 1507, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. There is no one from the public that wishes to comment. Any comments by city commissioners?
Mr. President.
Mr. Jackson, do you have a comment? Oh, okay. Mr. Steiner?
Motion to approve second reading and final passage of ordinance 1507.
Second.
Okay, we have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, then will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So, the motion carries.
Mr. President, the next ordinance is 1508. This is a rezoning from agricultural to light industrial. There are no changes to this ordinance from first reading. This property is located approximately north of the Lyons subdivision, east of the North Industries subdivision. It is a parcel of property that is outside of city limits. We do not anticipate that this property will be annexed in, at least at this time, but it will allow the property to more or less conform to its currently, or the current use that is, is being done on that property. There are a couple of conditions to the property that are, to the rezoning ordinance, rather, that have to do with site development and access to the property. Those conditions are acceptable to the landowner and city staff would recommend approval. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Colleen. Again, if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment on 1508, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name and we'll hear your comments. There's no one from the public that would like to comment. Any comments by city commissioners?
Mr. President, just a question for Mr. Colleen. I think the conditions that you talked about have to do with that critical right-of-way that we need on this to act. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. President, or Mr. Jackson, yes.
Other comments or questions?
I'll move that we approve the second reading of 1508.
Second.
With the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Mr. President, the next rezoning ordinance is number 1509. Again, there are no changes to the ordinance from first reading. This is a rezoning of property from agricultural to general commercial. The property is located adjacent to some, the existing Pine Crest development and would be incorporated within what it believes is the master plan for that Pine Crest development. Again, there are no changes from first reading. The city staff would recommend approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Colleen. If there's anyone from the public that would like to comment on 1509, you may do so now. Just step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. There's no one that wishes to comment on 1509, so any comments by city commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve second reading and final passage of ordinance 1509.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So, the motion carries.
Mr. President, the next rezoning ordinance is 1510. This is a rezoning from agricultural to low-density residential. The property is located east of 10th Avenue East and north of 21st Street West on the road out to the Sundance Development. It's approximately a 25-acre parcel intended for development of residential, single-family housing and there are no changes to the ordinance from first reading. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Colleen. Again, anyone from the public that would like to comment may do so now on 1510. Just step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. There's no one from the public that would comment. Any comments then by city commissioners?
Mr. President, Mr. Colleen, is this 25 acres? Is this on the north side of, of the highway extending out to Sundance Coast or is the?
Yes, Mr. Mr. Steiner, it is on the north side of 21st Avenue, 21st Street West.
So, how far, from the intersection, how far east of?
I believe it's a quarter mile east.
Quarter mile. Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions?
I'll move we approve second reading of 1510.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, then will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Included in our packet is the building permit report. Are there any questions or comments on, on that report? Okay, we'll move then to Public Works and Mr. Zeroff, this would be your item?
That's correct, President Johnson, Commissioner. Tonight I have our first change order for the Public Works Facility. In that change order, there are four items. The first item is the upgrade of waterline pipe size from 8-inch to 12-inch and in your packet, you have the justification for the 12-inch upgrade. It was put into the hydraulic model and the future water tank in that area, figured it was needed to have the upsize of pipe to a 12-inch main. That's the majority of the change order. The other three items are, are small. They include adding a tracer wire with a water main and then it happened after the packets were put together, there was some casing needed to cross the southwest waterline, so there's about 60 feet of 12-inch C900 pipe needed to cross the southwest waterline. And the last item, we moved the fuel island from in front to and back and actually that gave us a credit of $8.18. So, the total change order is in the amount of $63,584.78. And I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Zeroff. You've heard his explanation and his re- Thank you, Mr. Zurov. You've heard his explanation and his request, and I assume you're recommending that we approve that change order.
Yes.
So are there any comments or questions for Mr. Zurov? Not. Would there be a motion to either approve the change order or deny it?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Stookard?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Are there any items by city commissioners? Not. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission? If so, just step to the podium now, state your name, we'll hear your comments or concerns.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Fitter and I'm a, I'm a partner of GTC LLP, and we are owners of some land up north. We brought some, brought some property from Dickinson Energy Park LLC. It is located on the corner of Highway 22 and 40th. It's about a seven-acre parcel. Our plans for the property were to develop a 10,000-square-foot seastore, gas station, car wash, and a few other things to serve the area. When we bought the land, we assumed there was water and sewer to the lot. There is not any water and sewer to the lot right now. We have requested utilities from the city to be brought to the property line, to the property line, and the city has denied it. We offered to install the utilities ourselves, and they just, they haven't given us really a reason to do it, but they're responding that they need to give design specs to the, for the consultants. I don't know who the consultants are. Is that what, with, on the, to bring water and sewer to the property. The engineer has to, need design specs for the water to be brought over. Water is right now about 1,600 feet to the east of our property. We're trying to bring water and sewer over to our property line, and right now we're not really getting too much, too many answers out of the engineering department that we can get of. The engineer asked us to write a letter to help pay for the design services. We have done that, and we've been waiting for a schedule for the design requirements to be sent to us so that we can move on with our project, and we have not been given any type of schedule on what's going on with the water and sewer up there. So the couple of questions I have for them is, when this property was annexed in, there should be a water and sewer development plan for the property. Was there water and sewer? How was it supposed to be brought to this property to begin with, with the development plan? And when will we receive the design requirements for the utilities for this property?
Mr. Kessel, are, are you aware of this issue?
Yeah, actually I spoke to Mr. Fitter about this project, I don't know, four to six weeks ago, I suppose.
Month plus, yep.
Somewhere in that timeframe. And as he mentioned, he bought the land without understanding that there was water and sewer to it, and we were trying to get water and sewer to it, but on a different timeframe than Mr. Fitter had. He wanted to advance the project quicker than our timeframe allowed, and so he was asked if he wanted to, by advancing that timeframe, use his own funds to do that, which he said yes. So now the question becomes, well, what size pipes, what's, what size of extensions are, are needed, and that would require our water and sewer model engineering firms to tell us those numbers. From that point on, Engineer Watson took over, but I understand that the letter, well, maybe I'll let you, Engineer Watson, take it from there.
Mr. President, Commissioner, we did receive the letter last week, and we did notify ours, our modeling consultants, and Mr. Fitter knows, in fact, that we did promise him a answer on the size of both sewer and the water by the end of this month. That was made very clear in an email that, in fact, I exchanged several times with not only him but his, his design team, and so we will be speaking with those consultants by the end of the month and providing that information to Mr. Fitter. As far as providing the sewer and water lines, really we are going to need to have some civil engineering plans so that we can review and sign off and approve those before we're going, going to allow the installation of those facilities. Now, KLJ has been hired by the city to do the 40th Street project adjacent to this development, and that design is ongoing. And so there has been some movement on that. I've been talking with KLJ about that design, but right now the priority, the priorities have been on different projects, and that's kind of what we're going to be designing, what we're going to be talking about on Thursday morning, which of these projects we want to move forward and at what pace. But as far as us cooperating with this developer, the engineering department and the whole city has, in fact, been cooperating to our fullest extent.
Mr. Watson, can you tell us where the current water and sewer lines are as far in relation to that property? Have we crossed 40th yet with our water and sewer line?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I cannot answer that question right now.
Did the water come from the west to the east, across Highway 22, and then to service?
The water line is coming up approximately in this location. Mr. Fitter's block is right about there, and so this is the distance that he has to traverse to get water and sewer to his parcel of land.
Where, where does the water line end?
I believe we have services across the street, but that would be it, if I'm not mistaken. I-
So we have, and that's where Mr. Jackson, and everybody else?
Mr. President, Commissioner-
Am I quarter section south? Okay.
So there's no services up there yet?
I'm sorry, I was a quarter section south of where I should have been. This is where Mr. Fitter's land is.
And the line is up where? Because, to the east of Mr. Fitter's property?
I believe it, the line goes just east of you, correct?
So- It ends east of Helleburton's property.
Yeah.
On 40th.
About right.
I guess my question is, when the development came in, did they have a water and sewer development plan before?
Was the cost of that line, was it, was that, that city's cost or was it developers' cost?
The existing line?
Yep.
I would have to go back, but that may be one of those, was that one of the special assessment projects? No? So then that was at their cost?
At the developer's cost.
Okay. They, they may have received a impact fee program when that program was in existence, so we may have participated in that cost, but it would have been capped at $600,000. And if I'm not mistaken, that infrastructure in that area was closer to $2 million in total, so we could have participated but not to a majority.
Who had been involved in that line?
That was Dickinson Energy Park. That was a group made out of Two's Construction and a physician out of Bismarck. Knutson, I believe.
Tracy, can you-
Oh, Tracy's here.
Tracy, Two's with Dickinson Energy Park. The first development agreement that we have on North Industries covers 34th, 4th, 2nd, and part of 1st that was vacated. Everything stopped at 38th or 40th Street because of the urban road project. The urban road project, I think, on the corridor plan is item number seven down the priority list. I don't know where it puts it today. From what I know, KLJ is doing the civil on the water, the sewer, and the stormwater. I don't know where they are on the roadway. It's been moved down the chart quite a number of times, and that, what, what, that is what would pick up Champion, Two's Construction, Mr. Fitter's property, and the other side of Helleburton's property. And 1st Street going to Ironworks and Sims in that interconnect. And it does stop at Wyoming Casing, the new facility at Wyoming Casing. They did come under 38th or 40th and connect the new facility at Wyoming Casing.
And the cost on that was borne by-
It was all borne by Dickinson Energy Park.
Any impact fees?
We did not claim any impact fees on 2nd or 34th. We did claim on 4th, which is the street to the east that picks up Lyons subdivision, the detention pond, and the communal stormwater sewer that picked up Baker Hughes.
Mr. President? Mr.- I know that somewhere in this building, there's a set of the original water and sewer plans. We had those. I don't know what they show, but they're here somewhere, so we can see what was contemplated. This half-mile of 40th, we've talked about before, and it's, it's not going to be a, a simple thing. I know there's going to be extensive storm sewer as well. The street really should be designed before water and sewer goes in. It may be, and Mr. Watson maybe knows more than I do, but it may be that a water trunk line is going to pass by this area that we may not allow a tap on the trunk line. There may have to be a separate line. There, there's a lot to what's going on in this half-mile of street that Mr. Fitter is bringing to our attention tonight. He's not the only one that'll be affected, I expect.
So are you saying there's a chance that couldn't be developed?
Oh, no, 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 it'll be developed. There, there won't be a problem. I'm just saying there's a little more to it than meets the eye as far as design and construction. We've got power poles up there that may have to be moved. There's a lot going on up there. And, Mr. Watson, correct me if I'm, if I've said anything wrong, but-
No, I, I, that's all true, and the, really the prioritization of, of where 40th Street falls in the overall scheme of the infrastructure improvement is really the issue here, and we really do need to do a complete design to make sure that any facilities placed underground under that roadway are at the correct elevation and so forth. So this is something that's not easily solved by an outside party, if you will.
Have we approved any task orders at this point relating to 40th? Any engineering task orders?
Well, of course, we have, Mr. President, Commissioner, of course, we have the modeling consultants on board, and we've already relayed to them our desire to size those sewer and water pipes, so they already have, which then the task, those task orders were previously approved some time ago. And then the 40th Street, Urban Street, Urban Transportation Project has already been approved previously also. So we do have engineers working on behalf of the city in the area. Again, it's a matter of prioritization.
Are, are those lines going to be sufficient for all the development up there that are currently in there? No?
Early conversations with both the sewer consultant and the water consultant didn't raise any extreme flags that we know of, so I mean, it's not really, I really don't know of anything negative.
So i-if they want to continue with their project, can they, they can put their water in at their expense and sewer in at their expense?
I believe that's what Mr. Kessel has indicated.
And can they recap those expenses by future users on down the line?
I believe that would be up to Mr. Kessel and the commission.
And, and we have done that with, I believe, out east across Interstate 3, is that correct? We let them put in the water, we've also allowed them to recap some of their expenses and people that tapped into that line?
By out east to-
Centennial Homes?
Commissioner Steiner, we have allowed for the development of, this development and this development, there was a line put in here to develop the Cove, Sundance Cove and Sundance Village, and that same process is what we did allow. In the development agreement, they paid for that extension, and if there are others that tap into that line, those dollars will be shared with the developer who put the line in.
We also have done one with Centennial Homes, when they put the water in there, correct?
You, you may be accurate. These projects, there's a lot of them, so I apologize, I don't remember specifically.
So there is an opportunity for Mr. Fitter, if they put in those lines, to recoup some of their expenses?
Yes, certainly. If we enter into a similar agreement as we did with Myers Group out here, they could recoup some of those dollars.
But I, I think what, what I was hearing from Mr. Watson and Mr. Jackson is that this is a, a challenging area in that the lines have to be put in properly at the proper elevations, and at this point, you don't have that information. I mean, that might be a, a little, I may have said that in a more simple way, but I mean, I'm thinking, I'm thinking that's what I'm hearing. I heard Mr. Jackson mention other details like power lines and, but-
President Johnson, Commissioner, if I may, too, one of the more immediate concerns is the stormwater in that area. Right now, it's almost inundated the, the road, and so I, I think, and I don't know if it's one of the major concerns, but it's one of, one of the large concerns is the stormwater issue of where to put it, how to get rid of it, and of course, that'll depend on grades and, and everything else in design.
This is not as simple as just getting a number from the consultant saying this is, has to be a 16-inch water line. It's not that simple. There's lots more that has to happen up there, regardless of who puts it in, whether it's the city or the developer.
And I think what I heard is, you're aware of the issues, you're, you're working on them. I think, Mr. Fitter, you want us to work faster. Is that, I, I'm, I'm kind of confused if-
Yes, and all, because I'm not getting a lot of-
If you're, if you're corresponding with these folks recently, I, I mean, are they not-
Correspondence has been, I've asked for a couple of meetings, or just a meeting recently, and they just said, we'll get back to you with, when our consultants are ready. I've had more discussion in the last five minutes about what's really happening up there than what I've gotten before.
Have you been corresponding with Mr. Watson or Mr.?
We had a, we had a small meeting with Mr. Watson, Nathan Peck, and, I'm sorry, I forget her name, Loretto, is it Loretto? Yes. And we started that process a little bit, and we did send, I sent a letter, signed a letter. It was sent probably a couple of weeks ago, and then it was only reopened or opened probably a week later by Mr. Watson or some, about two weeks ago. Because they need, they want us to pay for the design services on that stuff, too. A fee of anywhere between a guesstimate of $10,000 to $25,000 for the design fee also. I guess I'm a little baffled of, I guess, why I'm paying for the design fees.
Commission?
Mr. Watson?
Part of the reason is that we were asked to move- Part of the reason is that we were asked to move that determination forward at a more quick, at a quicker pace than the engineering department or the city was ready for, and the developer was asked to share in the cost of sizing the sewer and sizing the water lines, since we were not ready to enter into that part of the design phase yet. And so, an estimate of approximately $15,000 was given to the developer for the city to have our consultants size both the sewer and the water lines in advance of our normal design procedures. In addition, as with all other developers, the developments, the civil engineering plans will be outsourced for review, and we are asking the developers and all developers to share in the cost of the develop, of those civil engineering reviews, and that was estimated to be approximately another $10,000. So, the estimate for the total package was estimated to be about $25,000 for this development.
You were talking about other projects being bumped up and over other, some other projects. Where is this project in our timeline?
Commissioner Steiner, again, I think that this is going to be, there'll be a closer determination of an answer for that question on Thursday morning, really. I, we're, we have other, we have the 21st Street Transportation Project we're working on, we have the 10th Avenue Project we're working on and getting ready to bid in November, we have the state Transportation Project we're working on, and we also have this 40th Street Project that we're working on. So, as near as I know, this project really has received the least attention to this point of all of the other transportation projects in the city.
Is this property that they have, is that the link between everything that we're trying to tie in there, or what needs to be decided on with this property?
This property just is adjacent to the 40th Street Urban Transportation Project.
Because I'm getting other calls, like, when is the city going to bring water up north of there and sewer up north of there and so on?
So, and those are some other infrastructure prioritizations that we need to make, which project goes first, and who are we going to serve first and so forth, that hopefully, we can make some determination here in the, this week.
I guess my question is on the, with the city allowing a development plan for the rest of what was there on that corridor of land, that 160 acres, how do you allow water for everything there except for the seven acres on my corner, on the land there, for the developer? How does it get through to the city as a development plan without having a lot without water and sewer?
And the engineering department can't answer that question because none of us were here when those were approved. So, there's, we can't, all, all we can do is move forward. We can't point fingers back. So, those development plans were approved before I arrived, and they were, I believe, approved before Ed was here. Now, I'm not sure about that, but it was my understanding that this developer had an issue with the person that he bought the development plan, the parcels from. So, and really, that's not an engineering issue.
It's probably a development issue of why they okayed the development without water and sewer to all the lots.
I'm not sure if the services were even on the, the developed plot, the plat, that was, so I really can't address that issue.
Mr. Toos? Do you have an answer how those seven acres were left out of there?
Tracy Toos with Dickinson Energy Park. Originally, everything on 38th and 40th came from the developer's agreement that it was going to be in the urban road project. And as I stated before, it's moved down the priority list, and after the whole development and the 160...
Excuse me, Mr. Toos, so when you talk about the urban road project, so I'm clear, that would be the portion of 40th Street East?
Yes.
Okay.
The city in the developer's agreement took on 38th and or 40th, because it's 38th on one side, 48th on the other, because the county, they call it 40th, and the city calls it 38th. They took that on as an urban road project in 2010, and it's, it's just kind of moved down the priority list. And I believe, as I talked to Craig Kubis the other day, for Chris, that they were just hired, just contracted a month and a half ago, two months ago, and they have to develop that, and now it's moved to five lanes, and they're talking about access, as Mr. Jackson said, it's, there's a lot of civil engineering that has not been done yet on even the roadway height that affects my construction company's property as well. So, there's a lot of concerns. When, when I think that moved to the annexation, we all expected within a year that we were going to have water and sewer in that neighborhood, and it's not there yet. It's, it has moved down the priority list, and that parcel was supposed to be and is on the plot plan showing the utility easements coming along 38th, and that's how it was to be fed.
38th?
Or 40th.
You're talking about the section line?
Yes, the section line, right where the high line wires are.
So, what do we do, wait for the report to come in the end of this week?
Well, Mr. Mary, you know, we have a number of situations like this where we have various kinds of development, commercial, residential, whatever they may be, that are waiting for our infrastructure. We have a lot to do, and we have a lot to do financially, but just, you know, the work that's needed, design-wise and construction-wise, to get these things done, we're not going to get it all done when everybody wants us to. There isn't, there is no way we can. Having said that, I'd like to see this development move along, as well as some other ones that we've been hearing about, and I hope that our staff is talking to our consultants about accelerating as much of this as we can. There will be limitations. There's no way we're going to get it all accelerated fast enough to get this done for everybody. But as much as we can, I'd sure like to see it, and there may be, and I'm sure Mr. Watson agrees, there may be some interim things that can be done, but we don't know that right now, so we can only do what we can do.
You know, it was only about two weeks ago when we finally began to get a handle on how much state aid we would be receiving financially. You know, that was just dealt within the very last hours of the session. And we already know that even though we could receive somewhere between $33 and $43 million over the next biennium from the state, that we will need two to three times that amount to do everything that we should be doing in the next two years. And so, you know, there was, in my mind, there was no really hard priority list, whether we're talking road projects or wastewater or water projects, you know. We also just adopted our comprehensive plan that identifies the projects that they think are the top priority for the next biennium, but I don't think they're necessarily listed like 1 through 10 or 1 through 7. And these gentlemen, along with our help, are going to have to try sort that out. I know as a city, we came into this with zero debt. Two years from now, we will have close to $100 million in debt. So, when the city is asking developers to share, it's not as if the city is saying, we're going to put all the financial workload on you, put all the financial risk on you, and the city is not going to take any financial risk. I can pretty much assure you, the city is, will take financial risk. We have no alternative but to do so. Mr. Fitterer, I don't know that we have answered your questions. I did hear you say you garnered a little more information than what you had coming in. I think they're very much aware of your situation, along with multiple other situations we have, and hopefully, some progress is going to be made. I don't know what else to tell you.
Hopefully, better news after Thursday's meeting.
Well, we're certainly going to try to get a handle on just everything that we're committed to or should be committing to, and what the latest costs are on, latest cost estimates on those projects are, and try to get a good handle of what our funding deficiencies are. I know part of that down the road will be what, what will developers be responsible for financially, and what will the city actually be responsible for. It'll probably be big numbers for both groups, you know.
Right. I guess what we were looking at mainly is to see if the water is actually going to be put in this fall yet. I know the street project will not be, but if we know at least the elevations of the street, to work on our project and move forward. But even if we could get the water and sewer moved or have height, or I guess more engineering on that part, at least we can connect to the water and sewer and move on from there.
Mr. President?
Mr. Watson?
We, again, we will endeavor to provide that information to Mr. Fitterer. The issue, and I think that Mr. Jack, Commissioner Jackson alluded to, is that there are other issues in the area, and in order to get the elevations for much of the infrastructure that the developer's asking for, this other infrastructure has to be designed along with the total package, and it's, the 40th Street needs to be designed, the stormwater sewer facility is really going to be a big issue. And so, this all has to be collectively designed into one package, really, before we can have a total effort here. So, all I can do is say that we'll do the best we can and try to get some information as soon as we can, kind of, and my response to Mr. Fitterer, that I would get back to him as soon as we get closer to a definitive answer, is accurate. I can't, I can't schedule a meeting until we get to a closer decision on what we're going to install. Hopefully, that will be sometime in, in the first part of June. I would say the first week of June, we should be able to sit down and discuss some things more with Mr. Fitterer.
I guess that's where we're at.
Well, we'll wait for the first week of June or so, and we'll go together, okay? Thank you.
And hopefully, when we go through things in, on Thursday, we won't suffer too much sticker shock, so...
Thanks for your time.
Yep. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to address the commission? Now, would there be a motion to adjourn?
Mr. President?
Mr. Jackson?
Did we, I see an item on here for current change order policy. Were we, is that something we're supposed to be looking at tonight?
Mr. President, Mr. Jackson, that is in there for your information. That is an existing policy that was adopted in 2009, and there may be some changes that I saw you sent out by email specifically with respect to liquidated damages, and we may need to address that.
How move, we adjourn?
Thank you, Mr. Colley, and thank you, Mr. Jackson. We have the motion and the second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Motion carries.